They're asking, but please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
So which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. For all.
Sorry.
As a reminder with all board meetings, this meeting is being recorded. And at the same time, Dr. Egan, the ballots are still being counted?
Correct. I'm zooming to you from Kings Park High School this evening. And we are in the senior cafeteria and the ballots are being counted behind me in the main cafeteria.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go on with our regular board meeting and then once the ballots are done, you'll let us know. Okay, thank you. All right, tonight we'll start with presentations. We have two presentations for this evening, so I will turn it over to Dr. Egan to introduce the first presentation for us.
All right, I'm excited that we have joining us this evening. From troop 537 Kings Park, we have Frank Segreto. Frank is a life scout and Frank is working on his Eagle project. And I am going to share my screen, which is going to show Frank's presentation. And just give it a second to load up there, Frank. One second.
Hey, Dr. Egan, it's Joe Bianco. I just joined.
Oh, hi, Joe. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, guys. Sorry I'm late and I'll apologize. I am upstate at my dad's place, so the reception is spotty. I'm gonna do my best to stay on. Maybe I'm gonna move. If I do drop.
Excellent. Just dropped out, Joe, okay.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Frank Segreto. Frank. Frank, go right ahead and you can, you can tell me when to advance and I'll, I'll move the slides forward for you, okay?
Okay, thank you. Well, I said, my name is Frank Segreto and I am a life scout from troop 539. Thank you, Dr. Egan, and the rest of the school board for having me. I appreciate it. And today I would like to talk to you about my proposal for the 9/11 memorial refurbishment that is on the RGO property. Next slide, please. But before we begin, I just want to let everyone know about the specific people who did lose their lives to this sad event. Their names are on the left and their occupations are on the right, just so everyone knows who this is specifically for. Next slide, please. So why do this? Well, I was thinking about an Eagle project and my dad told me one day about this 9/11 memorial that was on the RGO grounds. And I didn't know what he was talking about at the time because I didn't know there was one. So he drove me over there and I saw what he meant by the 9/11 memorial and how it'd be refurbished. And that got me thinking, who else didn't know about this memorial? So I started asking my friends and maybe two out of all of them actually knew it was there. And I was very surprised by this since this is a very big event in our history. And while I was at the 9/11 memorial, I also visited Holly's Garden. She was a classmate of mine in fifth grade when she died. And I just remember seeing this beautiful memorial for her and almost nothing for 9/11. And I feel like 9/11 deserves more love and appreciation, especially for what happened. So I would like to maybe hopefully, hopefully make it even to Holly's Garden. Next slide, please. So what I would do is again refurbish the 9/11 memorial and make it eye-catching while keeping its dignity. I feel that's a very important part of it. Because as it stands now, all there is is a card stone with the names of the victims, some dead flowers, American flags, and a walkway with two benches. And I want the changes to sign up a bit, so it's into something new and it will attract attention to people who pass it. Next slide, please. Because as, as you can see, this is the memorial now, again, it's just a stone, some flowers and benches, not really a lot to go off of. Next slide, please. My grandiose plan, I would like to clean and power wash the existing walkway along with refurbishing and power washing the benches as well. And also I'd have a, create a gradual rise in elevation from the sidewalk of the back of the walkway or going along the walkway in arc formation. Maybe like in a down, up and down formation. Now I'd like to put some field stone or similar product to actually support this dirt so it won't collapse over in the future. I also like to install some solar lights on the pathway and the walkway to illuminate the monument and the walkway. And I like to also play some engraved bricks throughout the walkway of the memorial. That is a fundraising idea, but I'll get into that a bit later. And this is my favorite part, if possible, acquire a piece of steel from Twin Towers so it can be placed in front of the monument. So people can actually see the damage that was done to these towers. Next slide, please. So, okay, as you can see on your left, there's the walkway, as I said. Imagine that there is no weeds in the ground and it's power washed, it gives a new feel to it. And it'll look brand new like it was meant to be. And on the top middle of it, you can see the, you can see the sidewalk, I'll put the illuminated lights along the sidewalk and walkway. So people can actually see where they're going. As, and also if you see on the right, imagine there's like a few bricks scattered around with people's names in it or their company's names and their family names along. Again, that is actually the fundraising idea, which again I'll get into in a bit. And the bottom is some example of the solar lights. Next slide, please. Okay, as you can see on the left, again, that is a picture I've shown before. But imagine now that it had an elevated ground, so when people drive or walk by, they can notice it more. Because they won't just see a rock in the ground, they'll see this nice big monument to what this, to like what actually happened that day. As, and also you can see in the middle, those are the stones or some kind of stones like that that I would use to support the dirt to again keep from collapsing. And on the right, as you can see, there's just a few dead plants and American flags. I would put more vibrant colors of flowers, maybe red, orange, like green, blue, any color, make it stand out. And I'll either have one big flag or a bunch of mini flags, I'm not sure yet, but something that shows the patriotism of this town. Next slide, please. How I get the money? As I said before, I would, I would sell personal engraved bricks to people. They can write their name, their family's name, the company, as long as it's appropriate on these bricks. And we replace some of the bricks in the walkway with these bricks. That is our main way of getting money, but we also have church bake sales, which is very popular in my troop. We also have choir washes and private donations. All private donations are welcome. Thank you in advance. Next slide, please. Project timeframe estimation, I like to start the physical construction of this project July, August of 2021. Because of the current pandemic going on and the fact I'm going to need time to actually raise money and plan this, I'm not sure if it will be done this summer. It's going to be a lot to accomplish. Maybe it will, maybe it won't, but I'd rather take the time and do it right than just like speed it up and it'd be mediocre. And the actual construction time, it won't take two to three weeks to actually complete. No time at all, it'll be quick and easy. And I would like to maybe reopen and re-dedicate this memorial on September 11th of 2021, which is a Saturday. I feel that would be good homage to what happened on that day, so people can be there and show up. Next slide, please. How can the Kings Park Central School District help? Well, first and foremost, I'm going to need permission to work on the RGO grounds. If I don't have this, I won't be able to actually work on the grounds, pretty simple. And I'm also going to need the use of water and electricity for the power washers to clean everything up. And if necessary, further assistance may be required to finish the project. But most importantly, I'm going to need a signature in my Eagle Scout Service Project Workbook confirming that I can continue with the project. If I don't have this, then I won't be able to actually complete the project. Next slide, please. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, please let me know now, or you can email me on my email or call me at my home number. Thank you.
Nice. Excellent job, Frank.
Thank you.
Any, any questions from the board?
No questions, Frank. Hi, my name is Pam DeFord. I just want to thank you for coming forward. I do see this memorial every Sunday going to church and I do look at it often. And I have given thought, you know, of, I wish we can do something more and I wish it was more of a standout so people do not forget and remember, especially the ones that live in Kings Park here, who sacrificed their life on that day. So I think it's a wonderful idea. I, I thank you for doing this. We can support you in any way by doing flyers for you, you know, putting out flyers on our email. Just let Dr. Egan know when you do have your car washes or bake sales or anything else you come up with, we'd be more than happy to support you in this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Frank, if I, if I, this Kevin Johnson, if I may ask, this is a project, this is something that happened before you even born, which I find rather interesting. But, you know, mark the, you know, 20-year, I don't want to quote anniversary, okay, 20 years commemoration of it. How much money do you think this will cost? Have you given thought to what the dollar figure would be?
Well, it depends on the, on the fundraising idea, because with the engraved bricks, if we can get 50, that'll raise up possibly $4,000, which will definitely be more than enough, but I assume at the least around like $600 to $800.
Okay. I'll be talking to you.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent, excellent job, Frank. Whatever you need, you need me to sign, just let me know. We, we can connect, you know, as, as soon as tomorrow. I'm around, I can, I can get you some signatures and we can get you up and running. Don't worry about water and electricity, we'll help you out 100%. And I'll be counting in for a couple of bricks.
Okay, sounds great.
And please don't worry about the money, it's going to be there.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely.
It's going to be there.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you.
Good job, Frank. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting this happen.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Egan, do you want to go on to presentation number two?
Sure, we got a, a second presentation and if you just bear with me for a second, I will pull up our facilities presentation. And Mr. Craig is going to walk us through that one.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So as we do every year, just going over our facilities work for this upcoming summer. So if you can hit the next slide. So each year we meet with H2M, which is our architects and engineers, and also with Park East, the construction managers, as we plan our summer work. As we've done for the past five years, we do our updates for the board. These are our annual spring updates for the summer work, which will commence shortly. And then we'll do another update in the fall, which we really go over the work that was completed and also the financial status as well. In addition to our public meeting tonight, we also will update the Facilities Committee on the work that will be ongoing as well. So we're going to go school by school. So on, on the slide is all the work at Kings Park High School that's been completed. In bold is the work that we are going to complete this summer. So as you see, at the high school, we've done a lot of work. Turf field, roof replacement, our new media center, comfort station locker rooms, and also new bathrooms. This upcoming summer, we have ceiling replacement at Kings Park High School. And we're also doing door and hardware replacement as part of our safety protocols. So next slide. So this just gives you a look at the ceilings. Basically throughout Kings Park, we kind of have a hodgepodge of ceiling tiles. On the left-hand side, you see four by eight ceiling tiles. We're looking to go to a more uniform two-by-two ceiling tile throughout the district, so that's what you'll see on the right-hand side. So we're doing that this summer at Kings Park High School. Next slide. William T. Rogers, once again, the work that's been completed, we have outfield irrigation, roof replacement, parking lot upgrades, bleachers. And we have two projects for this summer, one's already in progress, our windows, which are in progress now, and also ceiling replacement for William T. Rogers as well. So if we look at the next slide, you'll see the window replacements already in progress. So you can see they take out basically one classroom at a time, both the upstairs and downstairs. And you can see it looks really great. They now have the white window frames with the maroon paneling. So it's really not only great for our heating system, so that would well needed, but I think it really makes the school look great as well. And once again, you'll see there we have some one-by-one tiles and two-by-fours after we replaced this summer. The one on the right is right in the lobby, so ceiling replacement to William T. Rogers as well. Fort Solanga, you'll see the work that we've completed. For this summer, we have electrical upgrades that will be done, ceiling replacement as well, and a security vestibule. That's not part of the bond work, but that's coming out of our school budget line. So we have done vestibules at both the high school and middle school, and this summer we'll be doing Fort Solanga as well. So just a quick picture there, once again, you'll see ceiling tiles, the old one-by-ones that will be replaced this summer for a nice, clean, uniform look. So the bulk of our work will be done at RGO this summer. So you see in the past, we've done the parking lots, some interior renovations, auditorium upgrades. So this summer we have the roof replacement that will be done. We have bathroom renovations, a small piece of ceiling replacement, new bleachers for the gymnasium. In addition, door and hardware replacement, and also RGO will be getting a security vestibule as well. So the bulk of our work taking place at RGO this summer. So here are some photos of the current bathrooms in RGO, so certainly as you can see, in need of a renovation. So those will be done this summer for our students and staff. Next, we have the bleachers that are going to be replaced. So we do have a fairly new gym floor at RGO, so we'll be getting new bleachers actually this fall. So similar to the ones at William T. and the high school, we'll have those maroon bleachers put in and also paint the gymnasium as well. And then there you have the roof, so we have two photos of the roof there. And that photo on the lower left is the roof that's going to be replacing the RGO roof. So the RGO roof is currently a slate roof, so that's going to be replaced with a synthetic slate material. So we actually had to have those synthetic slate tiles created to match the current roof. Dr. Egan did a lot of work with the museum folks to make sure we had kind of some consensus on the look of the roof. That was also approved by the state historic society, so that's been approved and that will be done this summer. And that roof comes with a 50-year warranty. And then lastly, we have Parkview. We've done a lot of paving upgrades, interior renovations, floor and ceiling, door and hardware, toilet renovations. And this year during the summer, also adding a security vestibule to Parkview, so that all five of our buildings will have the security vestibules. And then moving forward, what we'll do, as we do every year in the fall, we'll do a summary of the work that was completed this summer. At that time, we'll give the financials, you know, where we stand financially at the end of our summer work. And then we can then review all our bond and budget resources to see what projects need to be completed. So as a reminder to the board, we're in year five of our bond work. Going into this summer, we're about $130,000 under budget, so we're in fairly good shape. Basically, all the work throughout the district that was done for the bond has been completed. The only work really remaining is work at San Remo, which may entail some window work and ceiling renovation. But when we hit the fall, we'll look at where we are financially and see what work can be completed to finish up our bond work. And that is our presentation of our upcoming summer work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I know we have been doing a lot of work these past few years. I just have to say, last night was the first time being at William T. Rogers for the senior parade. It looks fabulous. It really does show the Kings Park pride. As you said, not only helps with the heating and the cooling, but it looks very, very nice. So, great job. And to hear we're under budget is another plus. Joe, did you hear that?
I did.
Okay, thank you for the update. Does anybody else have anything regarding?
Not.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Craig. Dr. Egan, did you have anything else with the presentation?
I, I think we're, I think we're in good shape with presentations.
Okay. All right. At this time, I'll go on to public comments for agenda items only. So the Board of Education will hear public comments that address voting items on tonight's agenda only at this time. Speakers must first identify themselves and then address their comments to the board. Comments by an individual may not exceed three minutes due to confidentiality concerns. The board does not permit speakers to raise issues, concerns concerning a specific student or personnel matter. Such concerns should be presented to the superintendent after the board meeting. Are there any public comments regarding agenda items? Okay, I'll go on to consent agenda, number one. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 2nd board meeting. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. I think I was absolutely.
Okay. Okay, going on to new business voting, personnel schedule, number 19, Mr. Craig.
Okay, so a few highlights of this evening's personnel schedule. We do have the appointment of Director of Technology and Data Systems, and that is Dr. Brian Dear, who is joining us. Dr. Dear, he's currently in the Assistant Principal of William T. Rogers Middle School. He's been doing an outstanding job and we look forward to Brian joining us in that new position. And he'll be starting on August 17th, so congratulations, Dr. Dear. We also have the appointment of some curriculum writing for the summer in the area of physical education and also some elementary curriculum writing for grades kindergarten and grade one. And then we also have, put together by Dr. Colby, staffing for our extended school year program. So that program will be in-person at William T. Rogers Middle School, starting on July 6th. And these are the appointments for our teaching staff, our aides, and transportation staff as well for this upcoming summer. And that is the personnel schedule for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Craig. Congratulations, Dr. Dear. I know, Doc, I know Mr. Craig has said you've done a fabulous job as the Assistant Principal at William T. So we really look forward to you in your new position. And know you will just be as successful as you have been as Assistant Principal.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Brian.
And also, Dr. Colby Rooney, I just want to say thank you too. I know executive orders have been changing sometimes by the hour. We were told special ed would be remote learning. And then I think only a day or two, we were told now special ed is person-to-person for the summer. So changing gears and getting everything up and running for our students, we thank you for doing that. So thank you.
Thank you.
You know you're good when it looks smooth transition. Thank you. Okay, so I will make a motion to accept personnel schedule, number 19.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to the authorization to submit section 211 waivers for school resource officers. Mr. Craig?
So this is a resolution we do every June, Mr. Ford, so this is just seeking permission to submit the 211 waivers for the school security guards that we'll be employing next school year.
And that's beginning in September?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to submit section 211 waivers. Request for the following school resource officers as listed below. Okay, on to new business voting, finance, the acceptance recommendation to add verified new vendors. As per district policy, all vendors must first be approved by the board before payment can be made. I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And as you note, many of these vendors are reimbursement to parents from the lunch program, milk program. So be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the recommendations to add verified new vendors to the approved district vendor list as per the attached documentation. Okay, new business voting, authorization to sign contract for cooperative education services with Western Suffolk BOCES for the 2020-2021 school year. Would that be, Dr. Egan?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take this one because Shannon's inside.
Okay.
And as the board knows, we leverage BOCES as a regional purchasing hub to the greatest extent possible because we get school aid back on those purchases. So these are the contracts for the upcoming school year in 2021.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All.
Resolve that in accordance with section 1950.51 of education law, the Board of Education approved the initial service request report AS7 submitted by Western Suffolk BOCES to provide approved educational and support services, including capital, administrative, and clerical costs in the amount of for the 2020-2021 school year. Okay, on to the acceptance of recommendation to award bids for the 2020-21 school year. Dr. Egan?
Due to purchasing policy and various laws and regulations, certain large purchases have to go out to bids in areas of custodial supplies and phys ed supplies, athletic equipment and supplies, various automotive parts and so on and so forth. And these are the bids for the 2021 school year in those areas.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whereas the Board of Education bidding policy complies with sections 103 of general municipal law, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education awards the following bids for the 2020-21 school year to the lowest responsible bidders per the attached documentation. Okay, on to pupil personnel. The acceptance of CSC meeting recommendations, Dr. Colby Rooney.
The following will include minutes from 67 Committee on Special Education meetings that were held between the dates of March 3rd through June 11th.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd just also like to point out again, all the work that went into not only setting up the meetings that you normally do, but having these meetings on Zoom, which is a lot more coordination. So thank you again, Dr. Colby Rooney and your office.
Thank you.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the attached individual education programs, IEPs, from March 3rd, 2020 to June 11th, 2020. from March 3rd, 2020 to June 11th, 2020, 67 in total. The authorization to sign contracts for service providers. This is for the 2019-2020 school year. Dr. Colby Rooney?
The following will include four contracts that will provide services for students with disabilities within the district.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby gives Board President permission to sign the attached contracts with the following service providers for the 2020-21 school year. Just to make a mo-, just to make a question, under the board docs, it had 2019-2020 school year?
I believe, I believe the heading is incorrect.
Okay, so it is for the 2020-21 school year?
Correct. It would be for the extended school year as well as the school year for 2020-21.
Okay, thank you. Okay, authorization to sign health service agreements with the Northport, East Northport School District. Again, is that for the 2020-21 school year?
That is actually for the 2019.
That was for 1920. Okay.
And that will allow for health services for students that were parentally placed in private schools located within the Northport, East Northport. And we get billed for them usually by the end of the school year, 2019-20.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the attached health service agreement with Northport, East Northport UFSD for the 2019-2020 school year in the amount of $12,708. Okay, we're up to new business with Dr. Egan. It is that time. Do we have results in yet?
I, I do not have results in hand just yet. If, if you want to pause real quick, I can, I can run around the corner and see what our status is and report back real quick, if that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll be right back. Give me two seconds.
Aye. Robin, would you like to provide some musical moments for us? You were making a lot of people smile yesterday at that parade.
One of the best things ever in my whole career. It was absolutely.
It was amazing. You're right.
Great.
Very special feeling.
All right, so Mrs. Mian and Mrs. Capabianco are in the process of finishing the tally. All of the ballots have been canvassed at this point. So, I figure, may, maybe I'll, I'll do my quick update and we can, I know, I know Mrs. Johnson always has great.
Oh, I got something tonight, so.
And, you know, may, maybe by the time we get through that, I'll have some, some results to announce.
Okay.
I, I just wanted to start by, by thanking the, the high school administration, the Kings Park Fire Department, the Smithtown Fire Department, our security staff, Mr. Holmes, and, you know, everybody who came together yesterday afternoon and last night for the senior countdown and send-off and parade. It was just absolutely wonderful. It was a great celebration. We had teachers, administrators, aides, bus drivers, you name it, from all the schools in, in attendance and celebrating our, our seniors safely, using social distancing and masks and so on and so forth. And it was just great to see the, the community. It was great to see the smiles on the seniors and their parents. And it was, it was really a feel-good moment and a, and a great opportunity to celebrate the class of 2020. So, I, I wanted to, to, to touch on that. And did, did anybody else want to, want to jump in with some thoughts on, on yesterday afternoon, last night?
I'll start. It was.
Yesterday was wonderful.
Yeah, like you said, Dr. Egan, it was, it was truly a moment for our seniors. Everybody collaboratively worked together, along with the high school administration. I know they worked closely with student council. And they, they let the kids, you know, they, they worked together. And it was really a moment, not just for the seniors, not just for the parents, for the whole community who was there. I just want to thank the amount of teachers, administrators. The, the district just came together and it showed just that true Kings Park pride. And I think the kids and parents really felt it. And I felt it last night. I, I think we all did. We all walked away with a really good feeling that the kids truly deserved this, and we acknowledged them. And it was a great community event.
I, I agree, Pam. It was wonderful. You could, you could tell the emotions that, that so many of the seniors. You know, you could see it on their face, how emotional they were and how much it meant to them. And also, aside from thanking the administration, the teachers, everybody that came together to, to pull, pull this off, I think that the amount of pride that the students and their families showed, with the decorations of their vehicles. I mean, they just went, they were amazing. It was just a truly wonderful event.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was neat that it wa-, I mean, it was a great event. I think everybody said that. I think it was neat too, that it was, it was a moment for families. Parents and grandparents in the cars, some folks together. It was, it was a lot of fun and it was kind of, seemed like right, right about the right amount of smiles, laughs, and tears. And it was, it was just, it was, it was really neat. The turnout was great. It will be interesting to see if we've started a new tradition.
Yeah.
We, a bunch of us spoke last night too. What was neat was we often sit at graduation going, oh, I, I wish I knew where they were going to college. And so, it was neat to see on their cars so many of them, and you could place where they were going. The hard part sometimes was knowing who was in the car, that they didn't all have their names on it. But it was, it was, it was really neat.
And Mrs. DeFord, just want to reiterate some of those items, but the enthusiasm, the absolute enthusiasm, people coming through. And the line of cars just kept coming and coming. And I was, I was glad to see the staff out there in force to greet everybody. So, it really was spectacular. Congratulations to seniors.
Hi, if I could just add something. I thought it was a great event. The teachers were so happy. Seeing the students, being able, even if it was from a distance, it was a great opportunity just to see the students, even if it was seven, eight feet away. It was that connection that, you know, we were glad to have. I also just want to extend a special thank you to Duke Derlin and Kim McGinnly, who worked tirelessly to get that senior parade done last night. And it wouldn't have been impossible if it wasn't for those two. And with the time and energy they put in to make it as great of an event as it was last night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, we have cap and gown picked up, coming up real soon. And I, I know the high school is working on something that they're going to push out on the, the actual graduation date, which is June 26th. That piece will be, will be virtual with some, with some links to some things. We didn't want that date to go unrecognized. But the big plan is hopefully July 29th, we'll be able to do an in-person event at the high school. Currently, the US, I'm sorry, the New York Department of Health released some updated guidance on graduations. Not, not too much in the way of important details changed. The magic number from the New York State Department of Health is still 150, which doesn't really help us. We're hoping that number climbs to at least 300 and perhaps 500 or maybe 1,000 for the end of July so that we can hold an in, an in-person, a large group student graduation. So, fingers crossed for that. But la-, last night was just great. Great event. Anything? Do we, do we want to go from, from the board and do public comment, Mr. Ford? And then maybe, maybe we could swing back around and, and hopefully we'll have some budget results by then?
Okay. Okay, at this time, we will go to public comments. The Board of Education will hear any public comments at this time. Please follow the procedures outlined for the public comments session earlier in this meeting. In addition, please note that the board will take no action at tonight's meeting. Is there anybody that has public comments at this time? Or would just like to talk until we have our results in? Okay. Okay, if there's no public comments, I'll just go to upcoming important dates. As of now, our next Board of Ed meeting is July 14th. That is our organizational and regular board meeting, 7:30 on Zoom. It starts off our new year. So, that is our next. So, with this being the last meeting to, of, of the school year. As we all know, it's been a different type of school year. It started out like any other, but it did not end like any other. But through it all, I know we have thanked numerous times the amount of effort that was put in. And I would name people, you know, administrators, teachers, parents. But the one thing I think people have to realize too is our district office. So many of those ladies up there in charge with work, endless paperwork. Our business office going. Also, I pointed out, Dr. Colby Rooney, her Office of Instruction, with the constant change with the exact orders about summer school being Zoom, remote learning, then to in-person. There was so much change throughout this year and the flexibility that everybody showed in the commitment to helping keeping our district running, not only educationally, but as a whole district. I know, as I can say, we are very proud of Kings Park and for everyone. From Dr. Egan having his storytime Monday nights to Word of the Week. If anybody knew, all those red cups did not appear. They may have been done overnight by the mysterious person, but they were Dr. Egan giving us a word each week to keep the community going. So, we thank you for that. And, Mr. Johnson, is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I, I have to go along the same lines though, Mrs. DeFord, in, in terms of at the district office level, what they've been going through and, you know, the, the calls. And I feel, you know, I feel bad for the seniors not getting the senior, the end of the senior year that they wanted or deserved. Okay, but it, everybody kind of had their hands tied. But for anybody in this community that thinks that we weren't involved in that as a school board, they're sadly mistaken. And I want to say that publicly. I don't think there was a day that went by from March 15th when we, as a school board and administration, were talking about how to get kids back into school, how to educate them, and how to give them a proper send-off. So, I'm not going to say that to people in particular, but I'll leave it at that. I'm, I'm just going to leave it at that. Okay, and I do want to thank, I, I apologize. I did have to take some Dramamine when I was going backwards in Mr. Bianco's car there, okay? So, so, Joe, I'm glad we finally got out. Hopefully, we'll find a restaurant or something.
We're working on it. It's tough.
I was getting, I was getting seasick, so.
So, I'm sorry about that.
That's quite all right.
We, we've been out in front of the house, in the car, now walking around, so.
Very good.
But see, this is, it's the power of technology.
Yeah.
I've been connected the whole time, although I'm down to 10% battery. So, if these results don't come soon, I might have to check in later.
Okay.
Like I said, Mr. Johnson, along those lines, we were at that meeting, March 15th.
Yeah.
Okay, schools closed for two weeks with our executive, county executive, and here we are, three months later.
Never thinking that it would come to this.
No.
14 weeks later.
Yes. Yes.
And to all the people that are staff members that are on board for this meeting right now, thank you very much. It's, you know, as my, I'm finishing my 40th year in Kings Park and couldn't be prouder. End of this month will mark the end of 40 years being here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, the, the vote is in. And I, I would be extremely remiss if I didn't give Patty Capabianco a huge shout-out. You know, no, no one, no one ever envisioned an entire absentee ballot process. You know, it wasn't what, it wasn't what we had lobbied the governor for, but it was the process that we were given by the governor. And she, she and Shannon Mian and our business office team really did an incredible job. You know, not only getting the ballots to the printer and, and getting them printed in English and Spanish as required by, by law, but also putting a whole process in place with the printer so that they could get out to the residents and then back to us. Patty and, and her husband Joe have been picking up from the post office for the last week or so and, and doing a little bit of prep work that they could do ahead of time so that the counting went a little quicker today. And they had an absolutely amazing, well-run job with 16 people behind me that, that finished counting a little over 5,000 ballots in, you know, two and a half hours. So, so not too, not too shabby there. We, we also did have a student vote, and I will post the results to the student vote on the website tomorrow. We had a record number of students vote. It was 336 students. And we asked them some questions about their, their online experience over the last three months. So, we'll get that posted to the website tomorrow. But I, I won't delay the, the, the information that I know everybody's waiting for. So, in total, we had 5,082 total votes that were counted today. We had 3,223 yes votes and 1,852 no votes. So, our budget passes overwhelmingly. Mr. Bianco received 4,146 votes. He was running unopposed. We had approximately 50 write-in candidates. Most of those candidates had one or two votes for them. We had Katie Cardinale, who got eight votes. Donald Trump got seven votes. And I'm pretty sure Snoop Dogg and Mickey Mouse each had, each had one vote apiece. Vinnie Defish got a vote as well. So, we, we will, we will compile a list of write-in ballots, but the.
I'm not, I'm not sure how to take some of the last few, but okay.
Congratulations, Joe.
Congrat-, and thank you to our community.
Yeah.
Yes, thank, thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
We are here. Go ahead, Joe.
Pam, if I can, because my battery is getting very low. So yeah, I first obviously would like to thank the community and the board for working together and their support with the results today, both for getting another three years to serve the community, but also, most important, for seeing the budget pass. Probably as important a budget as will ever pass. I know times are very, very difficult for a lot of folks in many ways. And I think we have to be mindful of, although we, percentage-wise, passed comfortably, that's a lot of no votes, I'm sure, for a lot of different reasons. And those are reasons that we understand and need to understand if we don't already. Think about those as we move forward. But overwhelmingly, thank the community for their support overall, for the district and the students. So look forward to continuing to work together.
Good. Joe, congratulations. I just looked out the front door and the lawn signs are gone. So thank you very much for taking them down already.
Good, Joe. It's the team. It's teamwork.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And like you said, Dr. Egan, thank you, Patty, and the two people who helped her, I mean, to do this, to send out the amount of ballots that she sent out and had to go through the process. Many people asked about the legal aspect of checking people's names, not having their name associated with the vote. There was a process that we got from legal. She followed that with her group. And it just, as you said, we had to start counting at 5 o'clock, and it is now 8:24. So over three hours counting those votes. So it just shows you the amount of work that it took. So.
Miss, oh, I'm sorry.
Everyone, thank you, Kings Park community. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
No, that's exactly what I was just saying, Mrs. DeFord. Thank you to the Kings Park community, okay? I know education is not inexpensive, but ignorance is more costly. So thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, Patty and I are going to work to notify, there's a whole bunch of folks that we now need to reach out to, like Newsday and such. We're going to get those details taken care of. We'll get a thank you to the residents out on the website and.
Thank you. So since you have that going on, we will have no exec tonight. So you and Patty could finish up. I just want to say thank you again. It's a very good night for Kings Park. Two good nights in a row. So between the seniors and that, it's great. And I, oh, and there's Mr. Holmes. We always say thank you to everyone, but Mr. Holmes, that video that you put up, Kings Park Productions, of that parade last night, and all those seniors, the amount of time you've put in, we know it's way above beyond your hours. And you do it with, from your heart. And thank you.
No problem.
Everybody else thanks as well. So good night, everyone.
Dr. Egan, before we leave, wait, Mrs. DeFord?
Yes.
Dr. Egan, before we leave, could you just give me those numbers again, the yes, how many yes votes and how many no?
Sure. The yes was 3,223, and no was 1,859.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Sorry if I made everybody dizzy.
Thank you.
Have a good night. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody.
Good night.